Good morning. Being 9:00 AM, I'll call to the McHenry County Board Committee of the Hall Meeting of October 16th, 2025, and Mr. Shorten will lead us in the pledge today.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, could you call the roll, please?
Pamela Althoff.
Here.
Carolyn Campbell.
John Collins.
Here.
Joseph Gottermaller.
Here.
Terry Greeno.
Here.
Eric Hendricks.
Here.
Carl Kaminski.
Present.
James Kearns.
Yeah.
Dina Krieger.
Yeah.
Matthew Kunkel.
Here.
Brian Sager.
Here.
Michael Shorten.
Here.
Michael Scala.
Present.
Larry Smith.
Here.
Patrick Sullivan.
Here.
Paul Thomas.
Here.
Gloria Van Hoff.
Present.
Tracy Von Bergen.
Here.
Carolyn Campbell.
Here.
Chairman Bueller.
Here.
Having Quorum, I'll entertain a motion to allow Ms. Greeno and Hendricks to attend remotely. Mr. Kaminski makes the motion. Ms. Von Bergen, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good morning. I have a few items to report before we begin reviewing the agenda for next Tuesday's voting meeting. At that meeting, we will be putting the draft budget for the 2026 fiscal year on 30-day review, and this is a tough budget, and this county board has to make some tough choices. For more than a decade, this county board has held the line on the budget and rejected levy increases in order to give our taxpayers what relief we could, despite the fact that county government accounts for only 6% of homeowners' property tax bills. While other county governments raise their taxes, our strong financial position allowed us to give our taxpayers some relief by rejecting tax increases during the Great Recession and the COVID-19 pandemic. However, we also owe it to our taxpayers to maintain fiscal stability, lest we create an even bigger problem to solve down the road. Once again, I want to thank CFO Carrie Wise and the talented staff of the Finance Department, Finance and Audit Committee Chairman Mike Scala, and his committee, and this county board for rising to the challenge that the fiscal year 26 budget presents. After 30 days, the county board will vote on the budget at its November 18th meeting to take effect with the new budget year starting December 1st. On Tuesday, October 14th, I attended the groundbreaking in unincorporated Ridgefield for the new Habitat for Humanity Trinity Trail development. Habitat for Humanity of Lake and McHenry County plans on building 10 homes for working families on the empty cul-de-sac road. Habitat for Humanity is a key partner in our efforts to ensure that hard-working people and their families can afford to live in the communities they serve, and I'm excited to see Trinity Trail come to fruition. If you'd like to volunteer to help, please visit habitatmlc.org to learn more. A week earlier, on Tuesday, October 17th, 11 people graduated from the 22nd Judicial Circuit's DUI Drug and Mental Health Court programs. These forward-thinking and innovative programs give nonviolent first-time offenders who qualify the opportunity to avoid litigation and bring participants the help they need so they can avoid incarceration. The program has brought about many success stories of people who were given a second chance to not let a mistake hold them back or deny them opportunities, and I hope that every one of these 11 graduates take full advantage of this new start. Thank you to county board member Carl Kaminski for attending. And finally, on Saturday, October 11th, county board member Terry Greeno and I attended the ribbon-cutting for Aqua Illinois' new water treatment plant for the Eastwood Manor subdivision in McHenry Township. For seven decades, residents have had to deal with rusty, iron-laden water, the stained clothes, ruined appliances, and required people to buy bottled water to drink and cook with. Since purchasing Eastwood Manor's water system nine years ago, Aqua Illinois has spent more than $1.7 million to repair and improve its water tank, renovate the plant, and add a water filtration system that removed the iron. Residents' taps now run clear, and this was not a project funded by McHenry County, but it was our pleasure to accept Aqua Illinois' invitation to attend and mark the long-awaited resolution to the issue. That's all I have today. Do any members have comments today? Seeing none, move on to public comment. Catherine Cowan, just a reminder, you have three minutes in which to address the board. If you've not completed your comments at that time, the red light will come on in front of me, and I would ask you to summarize your comments, so, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Well, thank you, county board, for giving us the opportunity to speak. My name is Catherine Cowan. I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Crystal Lake. This is in regards to the petition for Mr. James over there at the former Flowerwood property. So, as the area in question is within the sphere of the city's influence for future growth and boundary considerations, the city really appreciates collaboration with the county. Without this collaboration and coordination with the city, municipal services such as utility delivery, infrastructure planning, and annexation strategies can get complicated. The city believes that land use decisions in these transitional areas should be collaboratively planned and not decided in isolation. Moreover, the city's comprehensive plan outlines a long-term vision for balance and sustained growth. The plan calls for supporting actions such as promotion, retention, and attraction of businesses that provide a diverse tax base. The proposal before you does not meet this goal. It also calls to encourage mixed-use developments to allow people to live, work, and play in the same area. The proposal does not meet this goal. To promote developments that conserve open space and unique natural features, provide for effective internal circulation, and encourage quality in landscaping and building design, the proposal before you does not meet this goal. To encourage pedestrian amenities such as bike racks, benches, wider sidewalks and walkways, lighting, and wayfinding signage to encourage alternative means of access to commercial sites, the proposal would not meet this goal. McHenry County's own comprehensive plan calls for mixed use for this area. Transitioning to a B3 zoning district would not permit, or would now permit, large-scale, high-intensity industrial uses that are not aligned with the intended character or land use goals of this area. Approving this change would undermine the integrity of the city and county's planning framework and could be a concerning precedent for future development. For these reasons outlined, the city respectively opposes the requested zoning change. The proposed B3 designation is incompatible with both comprehensive plans, risks affecting the area, lacks the necessary coordination in between the jurisdictions. The city does urge the county to consider an alternative land use strategy that aligns with the long-term vision of the community and advances mutually beneficial growth. I know there's previously been some discussions about annexations, and just so you're aware, the city cannot just annex a property against somebody's will. You have to have that ownership's cooperation. Lastly, I would just like to note that the city has recorded with the Clerk's Office and the Recorder's Office and filed with the applicant the objection, so this would trigger a supermajority at the county board level for approval. Thank you.
Carol Moore.
Hi, thank you, members of the board. Thank you, chairman. I'm a planner with Crystal Lake, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about what Katie was getting into. I'm here to tell you why the B3 zoning district is inappropriate for this property. It's inappropriate because it conflicts with your own future land use map and because it allows uses not normally found in a business district, which would be detrimental to the orderly development of Crystal Lake. Crystal Lake participated in the 2030 and beyond meetings. When that plan was being crafted, our representatives left believing the land use map protected Crystal Lake's interests, and if zoning change occurred, it would follow the land use map designation of mixed use. Mixed use means residential in combination with office or retail. That's according to the plan. No zoning district currently in the county allows for mixed use by right. It requires, at a minimum, a planned development by my reading. So, our concern with this project and property is that B3 zoning allows storage facilities, making the zoning wrong for this location. Storage facilities don't create jobs, they don't generate sales tax, and they shouldn't be featured at the entrance to a community. They're large, featureless buildings divided by lots of empty space. If built inside city limits, we would require high-quality facade materials, variations in roof lines and facade depths and heights. These are not all things that the county requires in its buildings. Storage facilities, we believe, belong in industrial districts, and if you're wondering why I keep talking about storage facilities, it's because that's what the majority of the conversation at the ZBA was about. This is straight zoning, but several questions by the ZBA were all about storage facilities. The presentation from the petitioner was all about how he was going to put up a storage facility, how it was going to be just like his other facility in Wakanda, and when asked if any other possible uses for this, if, for this property in case the zoning was denied, he said, "No other use is being contemplated." He said, "Self-storage is what we want to do now." So, also in that meeting, Chairwoman Coustra pointed out as a basis for support that there's other uses in the area, restaurant, gas station, retail store, auto dealership, that are all consistent with the B3 district. But she overlooked the fact that those are all allowed in the county's B1 district. A B3 zoning does not add significantly more options to the petitioner to what he can do with his property. B1 zoning allows over 50 by-right uses, and the fact that the petitioner cannot-
Summarize your comments, please.
...find something to do with that should not be a burden to Crystal Lake. I believe there's multiple reasons that you can vote against this, and if you want to discuss it more, please, let's do. Thank you.
Kyle Lindley.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Kyle Lindley. I'm the owner-operator of Prairie Enterprises. We also have the adjacent property to the above aforementioned Flowerwood property. We are currently in the process of due diligence for the growing area of the Flowerwood area. I'm just giving you an update of where we're at with our project. We went ahead and met with, since approval, for zoning approval. We went ahead and met with the planning and zoning staff and got ideas on what we could do with the property. At that point, we had to do environmental study. The environmental study almost had to go through the whole entire growing season, so that's why we haven't gone any further with the project. We also had to do a lot of tile studies and other environmental studies, file for DOT right-of-ways, and we had to do a lot of other studies and also a lot of time going forward on making sure that the property is what we want to use it for. We don't have any determined nature of what we're going to do yet, but I just wanted you to have an update of that we are still working on this, and we are closing on the project at the end of this month. If anybody has any further questions of what we're going to be doing with the property, you can go ahead and give us a call. I just wanted to give an update on what we were doing with the project, and appreciate all of your guys' help that you did for us on getting the zoning changed. Thank you.
Donna Kurtz.
Good morning, county board members. I'm here as your county treasurer. I want to give you some perspective on the budget and levy increase decisions that you are facing. Notably, in May, about the middle of May, I had staff come into my office extraordinarily concerned, and it turns out, we did not have enough money in our general fund bank account to cover payroll. Not just one payroll cycle, but two payroll cycles. Can you imagine that? We just ran out of money. So, I sold investments. I sold good-producing, yielding investments that contribute to millions of dollars that we have made over the last few years. Those kind of investments won't be replaced. But secondly, I anticipate that gap in which we couldn't make two payroll cycles, I expect that gap to widen significantly in the years ahead, and that will create a county government that literally doesn't have money to pay its bills. So, the options are simple. First, make massive spending cuts, which, having reviewed your budgets, you know that you have done that work, and you have made some notable 18-people headcounts. However, that is not the massive spending cuts that are going to cut it. So, you're now left with a levy increase, and without making that decision, you are embarking on years going forward where you are going to have difficulty literally paying your bills. This is the first red flag, which I shared with the Finance Committee in September. You've got to make this decision, and by the way, I don't think it's a tough decision. I think it's a realistic decision of where we're at as a county. People expect responsible, stable government, and literally, what are we talking about? A $50 increase average across parcels? That is not looking at things in a responsible way if, in fact, you believe in the services and the caliber of what people expect of our county government.
Summarize.
Let me know if you have any questions. Happy to give you more detail.
Okay, we don't have any reports or presentations today. We'll move on to new business. Do any members have items from next Tuesday's agenda they'd like to remove for discussion? Mr. Scala, assuming 17A1 and 2?
Yes, and also 10A3, please.
Besides 10A3, which I have to abstain on, 16B43.
10A6, 16B21.
B21, you said?
Yes, yes.
Okay, seeing no others. Mr. Scala, 10A3?
Yeah, so, I guess, reading through the transcripts that we were given, that we're supposed to be basing our decision on, you know, I find it interesting that if you go to the documents on page 5 of 21 of the hearing itself, it states, I'm trying, it's probably like, almost towards the, like, the bottom two-thirds, there's one sentence that says, "Ms. Coustra opened the floor to questions from the public. There were no questions." We ran through this a couple months ago with this same situation, with the same city of Crystal Lake situation, and as a board member, I get frustrated because we even had a city councilperson come here to understand the process better. So, again, we have a letter from the city of Crystal Lake objecting to the property, but again, at the hearing, which, again, is what we're supposed to base our decisions off of, there were no questions from the audience. I, you know, if the city of Crystal Lake has that big of a frickin' issue with this, then they need to be a part of the process, and, you know, it just, it's frustrating for me as a board member. I think it's a situation where the city of Crystal Lake has a problem with this, and it's just, instead of trying to work with us, I just, I'm just, I'm flabbergasted. And, you know, and then, our own, our own people that we put in charge of vetting this vote seven to zero, and when you go back to, again, the report, it states that, let me just find it, I want page it is so I can address that. I'm sorry, I should have written the page number down, but basically, it states that, "Is there any reasons why it should not happen from B1 to B3?" And it says, "No, there's none," and there's listed reasons why it should be changed. Here, page 7 of 21, it says, "Facts that support recommending denial of the request, none." And then 12 is "Facts that support recommending approval of the request," and there's four listed there. So, again, it puts the board in an uncomfortable position because we have Mr. Gottermaller, who's recusing himself, so we have to have a supermajority again, and, you know, Brian, I know what your thoughts are on this already, so, you know, it just, it puts the board in a bind all over again, and it's just, it's just very disappointing, I guess. That's my comments.
Just as a point of order, Mr. Scala, they, at the point you stated there were no questions asked, City of Crystal Lake, and we do have verification, they were in attendance at the meeting, and they did provide comments before, but at that point, you're correct, the statements were made at the closing, but they were there in the beginning, just as a, just as a point of order.
Mr. Gottermaller.
Just that I have to abstain.
Ms. Campbell.
Okay, so, yes, the zoning board is required to follow the conditional use or whatever, or the, go through the standards based on what the county requires. That's their job, and so, to make the comment that the ZBA came to seven to zero, yeah, because they based it on what we would allow for within, unincorporated McHenry County. Because this is within the mile and a half, we get to take on additional information, which is the objection of the municipality who is within this mile and a half. We get to make, we get to, that we then can look at their objection and apply how that meets their zoning and what they're trying to do. That's what that whole mile and a half is about, so we can take that into consideration. That isn't necessarily something that the ZBA would take into consideration because they're looking strictly at unincorporated. Well, we talked about that before, that this allows the one and a half mile, being within the one and a half mile jurisdiction, it allows us as county board members to look at the objections of a sitting municipality that is impacted by our decisions. Is that not true? Am I misstating something? Because I don't want to mistake anything. Right? So, I'm correct. I mean, we talked about this before. So, this is why it comes to us and why we can make, we can take that into consideration. And we went through this last time, and they were here, and they said this was not in keeping with their zoning, and it wasn't. If you went back and you looked at their land use plan that they put time into, B3 was not part of it. And you can, and we talked, and it's very clear that it's not the intended use that somebody says that they're going to use, it's what it's zoned. So, anybody can come in there with anything within the B3, and we sat here and we talked about what those included, like, were massive washing, car washing facilities or whatever. We went through all of those. So, I think we do have a decision that we can make here at the county board on this. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, thank you. A little feedback there. Am I too close?
No.
Okay. In the testimony, I see that it's, they state that it's been vacant for a number of years, and I was wondering if anybody had the exact number of years that this piece of property sat vacant. I'm just curious. City, anyone? Okay. Thank you, anyway.
Okay, seeing no further comment. Mr. Kearns, 10A6?
10A, 10A6, just for the fact that I object to this solar farm for various reasons, safety reasons and different things, so I would like to vote on it separately. Thank you.
Okay. Keep your mic on. 16B21?
16B21. The only reason I pulled this, not that I object to anything on it, but it's the awarding of the funds to the different groups and organizations for the 26-year, and we haven't, and that's one of our levies. Of the $2 million, is it, I believe, Pam? $2.1 million, and since we haven't settled that particular levy, I'd hate to have us, like, the mental health board had passed funding for people prior to their budget being approved, and I don't want to get in that situation. I'd only like if we could, if it doesn't affect some of these, if we could postpone this for a month.
Mr. Scala.
It's last year's money. It's not this year's money.
I thought it said 26 budget.
It's, they're using last year's money.
Then I'm okay with it. No opposition, if that's the case. I misunderstood when I read it. I thought it meant 26. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gottermaller, 16B43?
Yes, we've got the comp plan in front of us again, and there's, although I've- about it in P and D, and we thought we should bring it here so they can look at it. I'm going to take you through like, five of them that I'm concerned with. Page forty-six talks about the estate zoning is two units per acre. Just to give you an idea of what that will do, you could, if this is approved, as it currently sits with two units to an acre, somebody can go down to twenty-nine ninety where there's at least four or five hundred acres of estate one zoning, which calls for one unit per acre estate, and asks to have all of that changed to two units per, two units per acre. It hasn't been built yet, it's been vacant for some time, it would meet those requirements. I don't think that this board planned on going places and saying, we're going to take five hundred acres of land and suddenly double the density on it, without thinking about it, but that's what this plan could be used for in its current shape. When you, when you count it as two units per an acre for estate zoning, that's what you're saying, it's not what we planned. The second section, it's on page seventy-eight, and it's what they call if they, the sub-paragraphs are three point one through three point, I think, six. Candidly, I don't think any of that applies. Three point three calls for expanding sidewalk networks in the county. We're not going to build sidewalks in the county, we're just not going to. Three point, it also talks in that section about walkable neighborhoods. Walkable neighborhoods also goes on in page eighty-four. It talks about, you know, taking care of vacant properties, it talks about Route twenty-three and I ninety expansion, it talks about IDing things like data centers as to where they might want to go, and finally, at one point eleven, talks about aggregate mining in SARAH. SARAH is strategic aquifer recharge areas, there's a map of them. What you need to understand about SARAH is, is that it is a map of the gravel deposits in McHenry County. That is the best locations for water to get into the aquifers through those gravel areas. We also have a gravel industry in this county. Those two areas are going to compete every time we have a gravel permit application. We need something in this comprehensive plan that acknowledges that as a board, we're going to balance those competing interests. They can't be to one side or the other, or we're stuck with one side or the other, no matter what's going on. We don't acknowledge that anywhere in here. We talk about how important strategic area or aquifer recharge areas are, and they're incredibly important for our long-term drinking water. We also talk about the gravel industry, but we never mention the fact that they're dealing with the same piece of land. So we, that needs to at least be covered. And then the last point that I was concerned with is a simple one, when you're dealing with the strategic area map, there's actually a mistake on page one-twenty-one, it's just a mistake, but the key for the map calls for crosshatched areas where the strategic area resources are, and there's not a single one in that map. It's just, it's a key, it's a typo, but I believe that in light of what we have going on, Mr. Kunkel and I actually spoke about this today, we may want to move this to December, and I would support moving it to December to give us a chance to fix those last items. But anyway, thank you.
Mr. Sager?
Yes, thanks Chair. I am grateful to colleague Gotamaller for bringing this forward because I agree one hundred percent. I do want to say that I appreciate tremendously the amount of work that has gone into this. I think staff has done a remarkable job, you know, and it sounds kind of blasé to say that the format is well done and it's very readable, and I think all those elements are important, but I absolutely concur with Mr. Gotamaller, the fact that, you know, the devil's in the detail here, and I think we have to be very, very, very careful and to look at those things. I was particularly concerned about the context of the walkable neighborhoods, because frankly, that's more of a municipal element, in my opinion, and I think that it's worthy in those considerations, but it doesn't seem to make sense in our context. And I also concur one hundred percent with regards to the questions about gravel pits, because we are looking at a naturally competing interest here, and we need to have some guidelines to provide us assistance as we make appropriate decisions in that regard. So I would like to have those issues a little bit more addressed and clarified so that as we go to the future, we have a document that's a livable, working document that we can be proud of. Thank you, Chair.
That being said, I mean, unless there's an objection, I'd be happy to pull it from the agenda and send it back to committee next month, if that's okay with Mr. Smith?
Yeah, that's not a problem. I was just going to ask, we talked about this at P and D, Adam mentioned that there are some of these things we could get cleared up, I was curious about what the process would be and the timing of it. From my point of view, it seems like getting these things cleared up before it goes on the agenda would be a good idea, so I have no problem with moving it, from my point of view.
Mr. Gotamaller?
I just thought the board should all be aware of what's left. There's not a lot left. I mean, I know I may have spoken for a while, but this is a two-hundred-page document, or two-hundred-plus-page document, we're talking about ten pages. So that's, that's why I wasn't necessarily in favor of putting it back to committee, but obviously, whatever the board prefers.
Adam? We can go either way. If we're going, if we're looking at December realistically, sixty days is a long time. John's in the back, and he didn't stand up and yell at me for that, so his staff, John Housiel is here, his staff will be the one doing the work, so, but sixty days is an adequate amount of time, I believe, that we can get these corrections made, but we can go either way. We'll do what, we'll do what the board's direction.
Okay, we'll discuss this over offline and make that decision, so, okay. Mr. Kunkel, do you have something to add or no?
Because it was reopened up, I have a few things also, but no problem, we can do this later, no problem.
Okay, the fun stuff, Mr. Scala, seventeen A one and A two?
So, at our finance meeting, we had quite lengthy discussion, and I want to thank Mike and Matt for showing up to our finance meeting to be a part of the discussion. But basically, we had, you know, a lengthy discussion about what numbers should be put into both ordinances, and, you know, at the end of it, you know, we had five finance members present, and it ended up being a two-two-one, one person abstained vote. So, as the chairman said, this has not been, not only an easy process, but it's been, you know, it's a difficult decision to make, but the documents before you basically are looking at, taking the look back, which was what the, I would say, a majority of the board talked about doing at the, at the special meeting that we had, and then, you know, at finance, doing an abatement, which is currently at one point seven million, and again, a dedication to trying to increase that from one point seven to something else, higher, and then not taking any CPI or new growth on top of the abatement. So that's what those documents reflect, they reflect a, excuse me, they reflect a budget of two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-plus-million dollars for the entire county. And in regard to, drawing back to what we had talked about at the special meeting, you know, this implements all of the green, if you remember, the green colored ones that we said that we were just going to implement. It also does not put in any of the yellow items, which again, are the items that I think we can discuss as far as increasing that abatement and any other items that board members feel like we can get passed through, and then it also deals with the supplementals that were presented. So that's what's there. Carrie, I know, has a couple of slides that she'd like to present. There seems to be a little bit of confusion about the numbers and what they actually are, and so she has a couple of slides that will hopefully help clarify that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mike. Just to kind of put in a graph format of the numbers that you just put out there, because I know there's been a lot of numbers that you've been hearing, and different scenarios, and taking money back, or taking the look back. So this chart, really, we tried to make it simple, so the top number is the sixty-five million, so that is the number that we took in last year's levy. So if we were to take that number again, and add CPI of two point nine plus new growth, that would put us at sixty-seven point seven million. So the look back that's currently on the ordinance would make the new base seventy-three point eight, and we would keep it at that, we wouldn't add any CPI or new growth, and then abate from that one point seven million. So really, the difference that we're talking about is the four point four million. So I think this, this is really the tool that's available to help capture what we have, what we've lost really to inflation over the past several years, because I know in all my presentations in the past several years, and Kevin before me, we talked a lot about spending down the reserves to get them to an appropriate level, I think was a really good exercise, but also that that was not a sustainable model. And really, we're to the point now where the reserves, for some of the funds, are much lower than they need to be, but for the general fund is probably right about where it needs to be. But, you know, we've talked, like in the revenue projections, that that is not sustainable without changing the base in the out years, you know, as the ARPA money rolls on, as the expenses, is really the biggest change to a negative outlook. So, so I've shown you this slide many times, and really, the yellow is what we've taken, the top number is what we could have taken, and the blue is the difference. So really, I like to re-show this, to kind of reiterate that there's been a lot of great work done, and the answer is not always take as much as we can and figure out how to spend it, you know, it's, we're always looking at ways to provide the service more efficiently and save money or so on. This one also, I showed at the special budget meeting, and really, this is just showing how we have not been keeping up. So going back again, we've been talking for several years, it's not sustainable. So, you know, I know there's a lot of conversations about, you know, taking the mental health money in the look back, but really, in reality, probably over the past four years, we should have been slightly increasing our levy, you know, whether it's one point one for the past four years or something, to get us to a point where we can have a stable future. We knew ARPA was rolling off for some, you know, since it started in twenty-six, and here we are. So is there any questions on this so far? Particularly on this one?
Seeing none. Oh, no light?
I'm sorry, I haven't been here, I pressed the wrong button. Can I just ask for clarification? Because the last, with the special budget meeting, we talked about an abatement, but we didn't specify a number. Where did the one point seven come from? Was that a discussion at finance?
Yeah, at finance and audit, so as I said, we really look at resolutions that have been passed, programs that the board wants to support, and what is that cost going to be? So when we come up with our total expense budget, we look at what we need for revenue to support those services. So we came up with the one point seven by taking the look back, moving some of the space in that four, four point four million into other levies that, that really, like, you know, we've talked a lot, FICA cannot make payroll, IMRF is close to not being able to make payroll, VAC, you know, is not keeping up with its expenses. So we take some of that cap and that four point four, move it to the other levies, and then add it to the general fund, and then see, you know, how do we balance it? And we came up with the one point seven. But I know Mike made the commitment in finance and audit that the one point seven is just where we're at right now. You know, we're always looking for additional cuts or additional revenue, things we can do differently. So, talked a little bit about the green and the yellow. So the green right now, so the numbers that we talked at finance, this number includes about eight hundred and five thousand of supplementals, and the green options. So, you know, if the board wants to discuss any of the yellow options, any of the yellow options that we would implement would increase the abatement. And also, too, we talked a little bit about using some of the general fund reserve to also increase that abatement.
Can I go on? So if we did that, that's the way I want to go. So if we did that, so if this board considered including the yellow, which is difficult, but, you know, hard decisions, then what am I talking about with regard to abatement? Where does it go? From one point seven to what? Do we have an idea?
So, so the yellow doesn't have to be all or nothing, it can be...
I understand that, I'm, let's start with all. If we take every single one of the yellows...
So outside of the bottom one, because that doesn't impact our fiscal twenty-six, it's about an additional one point two, on top of the one point seven.
Okay. So then it's almost three million.
And then, any utilization of the general fund balance we can also add is an abatement.
And can I ask too, Carrie, remind me, please, when we talk about the borrowing from the general operating fund to pay back FICA or to use to pay FICA expenses, when does that usually hit us in our budget, and how often has that happened to us, say, in the past four years?
So it doesn't necessarily impact the budget, it's a balance sheet item?
Understood.
All it is, is an advance from the general fund bank account essentially to the FICA bank account to make payroll.
And have we ever paid that back in the past?
So it started in fiscal, probably the end of fiscal twenty-four, where we started, or maybe the beginning of twenty-five, where FICA began to not, to not make payroll. So the FICA fund is still currently negative, so we have not started that payback. And also, I know we talked a little at finance, you know, the board can decide to not pay it back as well, that's another tool.
Understood. Again, I just, I kind of wanted to lay that groundwork a little bit, and just remind people that that was kind of the conversation, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. Grado?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
So, so it doesn't necessarily impact the budget, it's a balance sheet item?
Understood.
All it is, is an advance from the general fund bank account essentially to the FICA bank account to make payroll.
And have we ever paid that back in the past?
So it started in fiscal, probably the end of fiscal '24, where we started, or maybe the beginning of '25, where FICA began to not, to not make payroll. So the FICA fund is still currently negative, so we have not started that payback. And also, I know we talked a little at finance, you know, the board can decide to not pay it back as well. That's another tool.
Understood. Again, I just, I kind of wanted to lay that, that groundwork a little bit and just remind people that that was kind of the conversation. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Grado?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I know that whenever we have to do something that's very different, it, it's difficult. Change is difficult. And this year, I know that we were very much trying, and I appreciate all the efforts, to look at our budget differently. When we started with this project this summer, it was to look at four scenarios. We were to be given balanced budgets with a 3% cut, and then the departments would have decided what they were cutting. We had a second choice of a 0-0, no new growth, no CPI, with a choice of what they would be cutting, balanced budgets. The third was the new growth, 0 CPI. And the fourth was new growth and CPI. We never received that. Our hope was that then we would be able to go to our districts, have town halls, and discuss with constituents, how do you feel about these cuts under these scenarios? What would, you know, is, does any of this impact you? We also have discussed that there are areas that, you know, we don't want to make the decision for department heads on what they're going to cut. That is not our job. But we have had some realistic things proposed, since we haven't received the information that we were hoping to get, on freezing hiring, on freezing overtime, on cutting payroll, on looking at travel budgets, on looking at outside contract budgets, money that's being spent there, that we're paying outside people to come in and do the jobs that perhaps we could be doing internally. And there's more. I know from the board with discussions that have happened that there are more, and I hope that people will say those. So we have gone from that scenario to something that was so far removed to actually go back on a referendum promise that we would not put this back into the budget. They're already being taxed on the mental health money through the sales tax. And we said that we would not put that back in the property tax. In addition to that, we, we have another year that we could do that if our cuts weren't. I mean, but we're looking ahead at, you know, lowering our reserve by fractions of a month or weeks over a three-year period. We have another year to take that look back if we were to decide to do that. This has been brought on so suddenly, with people not even understanding what the implication of a look back is. And this look back amount gets multiplied by every year that this has happened. If you go back and look in the, like, 2016, I think it was, when the, there was a look back then. And it just adds on every year. So what's 3 million in a year becomes 30 million. And the most important thing that we need to realize, we are the stopgap for the voters. They have elected us as fiscal conservatives to hold the line on their taxes. And when we don't cut, then they have to cut. These people have to cut in their budgets. It's election time, we're going door to door. All I hear is being priced out of my home, being forced to move, can't take any more taxes, no place to pull it from. And I know that we're one of 120 taxing bodies in the county, but we set a line, we're, we're highly visible. And a lot of things that people feel like they have no influence on, like public health and the school districts, at least they know us, they talk to us, we, we interface with them very much. I have had not one person say, oh, please increase my taxes. So I cannot vote for a look back. It's frankly immoral.
Ms. Kearns?
Okay. There was a lot to unpack there in those comments and with, with Terry, but I, I do appreciate every one of them. Thing that sticks out to me is the 3% cut that we had asked each department to come forward with. Did each department come forward with a 3%? I know transportation did. Did each department present a 3% cut? And are they all represented here today, every department?
No, thank you, Jim. At your, at your June budget kickoff meeting, there was a question of, would you like to see a 3% reduction? Would you like to see a flat budget? Would you like to see just new growth? Would you like to see new growth plus CPI? I, I'm willing to be corrected, but I do not ever recall, say, develop us four different budgets and bring them forward. And because we were not capable of doing that in June, we hadn't even had our budget meetings yet.
Okay.
Right? To develop a, a full-blown $280 million budget with four different scenarios of it, one being a 3% reduction, was never on our to-do list. And you'll recall, when we presented in August, kind of where we were, we, we, we went in with, with, even showing you with new growth and CPI, how difficult this task was gonna be. And we did not hide that fact. We did not hide the fact that we were including CPI and new growth. We showed you, even with new growth and CPI, this was gonna be really tough, and it was gonna be tougher next year and the year after. So I, I guess, we all remember things differently. To, to say that the county was, was charged with developing a full-blown 3% reduction, a, a budget with a 3% reduction levy, that is not my recollection. We asked staff...
Okay, I, I'm gonna give you that one.
We asked staff to, to come up with, with reductions and...
But did any of the staff come up with reductions in the departments? Transportation did, I can see that.
Yes, we had, we had some of those reductions suggested in, in our budget meetings, yes.
Okay.
And, and, and we've asked board members similarly, and we have, and we've got some good ones, and some of those are still on the, on the board here for, for your yellow suggestions.
Okay. Because I see a lot of transportation items up there.
There is no question. There's more money in transportation than anywhere.
In the yellow, transportation also out of the, out of the taxes RTA paid for all the radios a few years back.
Yes.
Several years back. Transportation has been a give, give, give. But I don't see anything out of our health department, anything out, maybe some positions and add a couple of positions, but I don't see any cuts coming deeper from those other departments. And, and I understand, you know, we had COVID going on and everything else. But this is not, even if we pass 100% of what is the ask here today, this is still not sustainable, as shown on your charts in the meeting, three years down the road. We're still back, gonna be back begging for more in three years. And my statement back then was, in, in the last budget meeting, one of my statements was, because I made many, but one of my statements was, is we need to also increase our cuts on, on, across the board with all the departments, be it a hiring freeze, a RIF, whatever. And I know some of these departments have pretty high turnover, that maybe we could gain a lot right there by, by shrinking the staff there without having to terminate someone publicly. And the other question, and I'll add this on about terminating things, is when the COVID funds in '26 are gone, what is the dollar amount of staffing that is paid by COVID funds that we brought on, and the staffing that's paid by, by our COVID funds? What is that dollar amount? And do we have a resolution, or do we need a resolution that officially terminates those positions that we created because of COVID funds?
You have a resolution in each and every one of those that says that you're gonna need to reconsider whether these continue.
And do we have the dollar amount of all those positions that are COVID funds? Because before I vote for an increase, I want to know what that dollar amount, and I want those positions all terminated.
So in the, in the model, I did not build in any expense that's currently being paid for by ARPA that not is, that is not an essential expense to carry forward. So none of the positions are included, which is probably around, yeah, maybe 250,000, but I'll get you that exact number.
About five positions.
So the only, the only numbers that we have in the model, as ARPA expense moving back onto the general fund, are for rental agreements where we have contracts, Microsoft enterprise agreements, things that is, is not an option, the, the body cameras for the sheriff's department, it has to come back to the general fund. Everything else, I think it's about 2.8 is what I have in the model, and there's probably about three and a half of the current expenses that could come back.
So did I hear that right? Three and a half million could be eliminated, or tell me what that means?
So right now, the difference between the three, it's, it's three-something, maybe low threes. And 2.8 is not considered in any of the models because it is up for the board's discussion.
So 2.8 is...
It's the roughly 200,005, five positions that...
Yeah.
Are, would be in question.
And some other things that are nice to have, and that, that you guys can consider.
And when you say they're essential, is it essential because of, of the statutes? Is it essential? I mean, like, the camera, I understand is statute.
Yes. And the other one is the Microsoft enterprise agreement. And so when ARPA first started, really, the idea was, there's a category within the US Treasury, it's called revenue replacement. And really, that's a tool for ARPA recipients to kind of spend it on whatever you want. So the, it really was just saving the general fund from having to pay it while ARPA was paying it. It wasn't like a new program or new service, like we've seen with some of the other things.
I know also, one of our members had brought up in the last, in the budget hearing, had brought up about the bus that we had purchased through ARPA funds for half a million. We can't sell that bus for what, I think it, I thought, I heard it, I heard it was 10 years or something like that, the mobile unit. And, and, not sure why we bought it to begin with, but we did. So we're stuck with that unit. What does that unit cost us to operate yearly with staffing?
I will have to get back, get that information for you. Because right now, the, what was approved for ARPA spending on that bus was the bus itself, plus the years to operate it through '26. I, I don't have that breakout, but I can get that for you.
Okay. I'd like that figure. Because, because, you know, my opinion of that bus is, is it should become a giant billboard set out here in '47 of, we effed up by buying that thing. And, and it's costing us money down the road in the future. I, I've never liked that bus that we did that. Haven't seen the inside of it to see if it's got golden toilets or anything in it, I don't know. But half a million dollars, I thought, is, is crazy for that, that facility, when we could take it to the people if we had to.
And I, I appreciate sometimes, in, in, in ten situations like this, you can get the, that, that reflection. Just to remind, though, we, we had about 60 million. We gave 30 million to the community. We kept 30 million for county expenses. And of that 30 million, the board said, Board of Health, please help us identify. These are COVID monies, these are from a health crisis. How do we best want to use these? And it was about 7 million, thereabouts, that was kind of allocated for the Board of Health to decide how to best use. And that, and that's, therein was the decision on the bus.
Okay. So, so I understand that.
I just...
But, but my point I've been trying to make here this morning is, is I don't believe we've cut enough in all of our other departments. There's a couple of departments have done a great job cutting. Couple of departments have great, done a great job of increasing the revenue for the county, the sheriff's department. I'll give a lot of credit to the sheriff's department for doing that. And, and bringing grants and different things for, for the transportation department to pay for some of those projects like Randall Road. I give them credit. But I want to see what the other rest of our departments have done to give a little bit here. And I'm not calling for cuts in transportation any further than what we've done. I'm not calling cuts in our sheriff's department. There are two big ones. We got the small ones, and I don't know, they're smaller, I should say. The next one, I would think, was our health department, the next biggest department. So I think that's the department we have to look very seriously. And for the life of me, I don't understand why our, our department heads, maybe they've got other things going on more important than hearing about a budget that they may not have funds. I would really love to see all the department heads here today at this meeting. I would think it would be extremely important to them to, to know what the board is, is thinking.
Both, both Melissa and Robert, at the same event I was at, and I'm sure, I'm sure...
So, so I, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of let some other people talk here, I've taken enough time. But, but it's hard to support anything without seeing the rest of the departments give a little bit more. And that, I think our transportation, we're taking away money from the bridge funds, we've got other things possibly we can do, trying to take away another half a million dollars for, to, to give that over to the sheriff squad car replacement. All those funds mean we, the transportation either has to postpone projects that, that they've had in their plans, or they have to eliminate projects, or we have to eliminate possible bridge projects. And, and we all know how failed bridges, how people feel about shut, closed bridges and everything. But that's coming in the future because the, the feds and the state have not been giving us any, any funds here through '28, I understand is right, and, and may continue further. And I invite any staff, department heads, if they want to put some input here this morning, I'd like to hear from them of what else they think they could do and contribute toward this, before we just flat out say, we're gonna have to take something somewhere. Because if, if, if we don't pass a look back, and we don't pass a CPI, even if we pass a CPI maximum, we gotta make higher, deeper cuts. Okay? I'll say one thing, this, this board itself, a few years back, did a 25% cut by going to 18 members. So the board members did pick up more, more duties for the same pay that they've had for how many years? 15 years? Or 10 years at least, 12? And, and so the board, board has shown that they were willing to cut, which they did. They represent more of their districts because of that. I'd like to see some of our departments step up a little bit further and say, we can, we've got, we can figure this out. And help us figure it out, instead of letting, sitting back and just saying, I don't want to give anything. They better figure something out here, because if we don't have it, we gotta make the decisions. So I'm ready to make those decisions across the board on people, if that's what it comes to. They won't like my decisions, but, and I think this board needs to, to really think about that, and our department heads better think about it real seriously. Thank you.
Mr. Gotamaller?
Yes, Carrie, would you go back to your first screen? Yeah, that one. So you mentioned that we don't actually have to pay ourselves back FICA? That, that, that's a decision this board could make?
Correct.
All right. That FICA, if I remember correctly, is about $4 million, is what we're at right now.
Yeah, there's actually two issues with FICA. It, it's still, it still is not healthy enough to make payroll. It's, we still have a slight projected ending fund balance in '26, which will be negative. So it has to start rebuilding, just to make payroll. And then once it's at a healthy level, then it can start paying back or not.
Well, but it's $4 million behind now, correct?
It's probably closer to 6 million behind because it's negative.
Right. So it's negative $6 million. What we're doing on a look back is taking $4.4 million of that and paying it back, a debt we don't actually have to pay back. And that's what's bothering me. You, I, I look at this and say, okay, CPI and new growth always made sense to me, I don't have an issue with that. I don't have an issue with that. But when I'm doing a look back, the idea for me, when I was doing a look back was to preserve future opportunities, not to take it now. I don't have any problem with saying, I want to preserve the ability to go get it if we need it. But I don't understand why I'm taking $4 million of new tax money to pay a debt I don't owe, or that I do owe, but I could write off. And that's what bothers me with what we're, is proposed. I, could we do other things? Could we have departments cut? Could we do, do things over time and do all that? Sure we could. We've got a real simple one. We can decide not to pay ourselves $6 million. And then I don't have to take 4.4 million of extra tax money today. And that's where I, I, I just, I, I don't want to do a 7.1 million dollar increase and put $4 million in a fund that I don't have to pay back. And that's what that screen shows me.
So the total aggregate extension is going up by 4.4 million? And that impacts FICA is getting an additional million just to make payroll? We're not talking about the, the debt at all. VAC to catch up with its expenses, IMRF to catch up, and the general fund to catch up to what has not been captured by not taking the allowable, at least more of it over the years of high inflation.
So if I take new growth and CPI, I get 2.7, what was it, 2.7 million dollars of increased taxes? If I do a look back and don't abate it, that's the fight for me. And I, you know, we're not, we're, we're not gonna go under this year if we don't do that. We are gonna have a difficult decision in future years. And I don't mind preserving the look back and the ability to go to the higher number. I'm just not in favor of taking it. I, I mean, I, you know, if, if we abate it all back, I'm fine. If we're gonna take it, I'm not.
Mr. Hendricks.
I agree with both Kearns, member Kearns and member Godmaller, but I had a separate question. Carrie, can you explain? It, it, it's not making sense to me. The, well, first off, did the levy ordinance change recently? I feel like the numbers are differing, or are they not?
So the levy ordinance did not change. It's the 73.8. The appropriations ordinance includes the 1.7 in abatement. But it's a little bit different than what was discussed at finance because the, the challenge for making changes to those numbers, you know, after a discussion is, is the appropriate, you know, all funds have to be balanced. So if you add expense or you reduce a total with additional revenue, that actually adds to your expense as well. So the appropriations ordinance changed by the amount we increased for the FICA and IMRF levies. And then in the supplemental, the total is just about 805, but some of that is offset with additional revenue. So I missed that in my number when we talked at
You're accurate, Eric, the numbers changed a little bit, but not on the levies. The discussion was on the levies, that's where the debate is on the levies, but when we
Correct, the levy is the same.
When we tied out the levies to the number, the numbers changed a little bit.
Okay, and so then can you walk me through on the, the levy says 45,362,726 for general county purposes? But then when I go to the budget, an appropriation ordinance in the 2026 draft budget, I can't seem to make those tie together. It, it has
So the levy ordinance is, the total is 73.8. But when we calculated the number for the general fund, we reduced that number by 1.7 for the abatement.
Understood. I guess, I guess my question is we have 45, that number I just said in the levy, but then in the actual 2026 budget, it says 43,662,726 in the budget summary?
Yes, that is the amount of the portion of the levy that's going to the general fund minus 1.7 for the abatement.
Got you, so that so then I guess, what, where's the 73 million? That's the 73,802,726, that's what the, you're saying the 1.9 million reduction, abatement?
1.7, yeah, so it's 72.1. In that's, in the summary on those worksheets.
So those all, you're telling me that all those numbers tie together?
Yes.
Like they're, they're accurately reflected in the language for both?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
The, the, the budget summary, for the budget appropriations ordinance, those numbers are accurately reflected in the levy ordinance? Where it says 73,802,726 is the difference? And then the 45 million for general county purposes, 28.4 million for other purposes?
So the levy, the levy ordinance, in order to take the look back, you have to take the full look back, the 73.8. And then at some point between, or the same night that that is passed, in March, you have to do a resolution for an abatement. So I did not want to build in the revenue for what we're going to abate into the appropriations ordinance. So if you want them to match, then we would have to amend both of them if, if then abatement is done. So the difference between the two is 1.7 million.
And we could continue to try and make the number bigger.
No, I don't. Okay, I'll look at this more. It just doesn't make sense to me that we have 45 million in the levy, but then in the budget, we have what, 40, 43 million?
Yes, 1.7 less for the abatement, and that's hitting the general fund levy.
This sounds like something to me that it would be advantageous to sit down and look at the numbers together and try to, instead of trying to talk through it here today. I would encourage you to do so. Is there, is there something else that you wanted to discuss, Mr. Hendricks?
No, I mean, I'll just reiterate my prior comments. And I do believe that we had, we, we had directed to the staff, I don't know if it was at June or when, but that we had said, you know, we wanted to see what the, you know, whatever the, I think it was 3% cut, flat, flat new growth, and new growth plus, you know, CPI budgets would look like. But I, I certainly don't, I know for a fact, we never discussed taking a look back. And obviously that contradicts everything we said last year, but I won't harp on that today.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shorten.
So first question is on, on process. We have a levying of budget ordinance for review on the agenda for Tuesday. Are, is that what is going to be posted? Or do we have the opportunity to change that between, or make amendments on, on Tuesday?
Historically, we've not changed things on, on Tuesday. We use that 30-day period to hear and listen and educate and sharpen our pencil.
So, but we couldn't make changes?
Historically, we've not.
Yes, Mike, you can.
I, I read between the lines. What's that?
Cannot, they're not, they're out of order. On Tuesday, it's to set it up and have comments. The motions are made the next month.
You can't make changes by the time we take the final vote.
In November.
But you cannot do it on Tuesday night.
Got it.
I
Sorry.
All right, Mr. Shorten, continue.
Okay. So we have had some cuts from staff, but I'll just make the comment that some cuts also offset increases. Because we do have personnel increases, wage increases that we've approved here. So, you know, I, I don't think we're ever gonna get to a scenario where we can continue to cut ourselves down to a, a flat budget on a year-to-year basis unless, you know, we're gonna reach an inflection point in different departments. Now, when that would be and what the inflection is depends on who you're talking to. So I, I, I'm, I'm, I think, Grant, Hugh, we have 18 people here on this board and everyone's brain is not wired the same way. I'm going through the budget line by line myself and just looking for areas where we're budgeting, where we haven't had expenses in the past. And then I'm gonna go to department heads and, and ask, and I'll go to Carrie. And I'm sure there are some that we have to have on there just for, to have them on there for placeholders and/or for grant purposes and whatnot. You know, we're down to, it sounds like if we go with the yellow option, we're at a 3.2 million dollar delta between, between what would be CPI and new growth and a look back with an abatement. I know there are some folks who don't ever want to vote for a tax increase, whether it's new growth or CPI. But I think we ought to continue to work over the next month to, to drive that number down further. And whether it ends up at an abatement, a larger abatement, or just getting rid of the look back altogether, which I prefer. But I want to do the responsible thing and make sure we don't set ourselves on a path going forward. One other question that I had, and this lines up with member, or I'm sorry, Treasurer Kurtz's comments. The projected fund balances that we have, that Carrie provided me based on the look back with the abatement, the current resolutions we have before us, or that we're gonna be putting up for review. We would end 2026 with projected reserves of 6.25 months, 55,500,000. Our, our board policy is 40, or would be 44,460,000. And I appreciate Treasurer Kurtz's comments about the, the months that we had to tap into the reserves. But my question is, aside from being able to bridge that gap when we have the ebb and flow of taxes coming in, is there any other reason that we need to have a reserve fund in excess of the five months?
So we've talked a lot about the fund balance policy and, and I don't, I think five months would be fine, but the challenge is if you're using the general fund reserve as a safety net for all these other levies that are not keeping up with expense, that's where we have the challenge, where, where Treasurer Kurtz talked about the challenge in May and early June. Because the general fund has sources of revenue, other sources of revenue outside of property tax. So their monthly, its monthly revenue, you know, it's probably about 60% of the total revenue comes in more frequently than twice a year. VAC, FICA, IMRF rely solely on property tax. So they need to be able to go from September to early June and pay, pay their own bills. And so I think until those funds get to those levels, getting the general fund to five months is, is going to continue to, to give us challenges with cash flow. And that's one reason I suggested this year, using some of that general fund reserve, because as those other funds get healthier, you know, we can start, the 6.25 is, is maybe good right now when FICA is negative. But as that one starts to move, we can bring the general fund down.
Okay, thank you.
Is that?
I'll have to mull it.
Okay.
Ms. Altoff.
I, just in, in response to a comment that was made earlier, I, I want to take a moment. I asked Carrie to do a little bit of homework for me. And I want to remind, particularly in light of the fact that many of the comments made are from people who have served on this board for a lengthy period of time. And I just want to go back to my constant refrain. I believe this board, as you stated earlier in your comments, Mr. Chair, this board has done an unbelievable, phenomenal, responsible job in holding down property taxes where they can, for 6% of the property tax bill. You don't always see that when you look at your property tax bill. But I want to note that way back in 2005, when the average cost of a home, the fair market value cost of a home in McHenry County was $237,000, people paid $538 to the county as part of their property tax. 20 years later, when the average cost of a home in McHenry County is now $311,000, they are paying $564. That's a pretty fine statement. We do a good job and we have hard decisions in front of us, and these are great conversations. But I want all of you to be able to go back to your constituents and indicate to them that the county, as a responsive unit of government, has done a remarkably good job. And we get extraordinarily high rankings every year on how we account for our funds and the transparency of doing so. Our finance committee has led us in the right directions. I just want to remind you of that as we're talking to our constituents. I don't believe that this unit of government is the problem with individuals' property tax. That doesn't mean that we still don't have a responsibility. But I want to be very clear, we've done our job for a very long time and should be proud of it. So we'll roll up our sleeves, we'll get to work, and we'll figure this out. I think the big question in front of us, and by the way too, we, the look back option came in when we said we'd throw all options on the board when, when we're talking about this. That's how, that's how that got even talked about. It was an outside idea, but we said we'd look at everything. So that's how that outlook came back in. But the question in front of us is, do you want to make the hard decision this year to put us in a place where we're, we're gonna be able to make hard decisions, but easier moving forward? So do you, do you want to dig in now and make a decision that ultimately can assist us moving forward? Or do we want to kick the can down the road and have the same conversation a year from now? Which might be even more difficult. Neither one's right, neither one's wrong. We're all entitled to our opinions, right? We're gonna come to a consensus and we're gonna move forward. But I think ultimately, that is the decision in front of us. And if we're going to not take the look back and only consider the CPI and new growth, then we have to have very serious conversations about what else you want to remove from the budget. That's, I mean, those are our choices, period, end of story. So let's start having some serious conversations about what options are out there. Do you want to include the yellow? Do you want to consider looking back and increasing the 1.7 abatement to 3 million more? But those are the conversations we have to have now, not asking for more information. I think that our department heads, I, I give them all kudos. I think they've done a great job coming to committee and saying, you know, here's our budget. You know, here's what we think we need, our essentials, and here's the rest of it. What do you want to do? I mean, I, I know, Mr. Kearns, you indicated public health. They gave us a huge spreadsheet of all the programs that are mandated, as well as the ones that they consider essential and all the other ones. We can, we can look at that. It was emailed to us at one of the last meetings. It, it, it's, it's, we've gotten the information. I really believe we have the information. We just now have to take that information and decide what we want to do moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Kunkel.
A little bit contrary to that point, but we should be thankful for this first-year look at what's going to be undoubtedly in the next two or three years. Difficult times for times for McHenry County. We have a state that isn't, is going to be getting the minimum help from the federal government possible, which means they'll be sharing the minimum help for us. Our situation is going to be exacerbated down the road, at least for the next couple of years. I'm thankful we have this opportunity this first year. We should be digging in very hard and finding what our true, true base number, where is our bottom number to keep this county operating at the level it operates? When a business is in this situation, some businesses go on and do business as usual and flounder and fail. Doing the same thing and expecting different results for McHenry County right now could be disastrous. But I also don't want to be grabbing for the life ring immediately on our first opportunity. Taking this look back looks like the nuclear decision to me to say, this is our last hope. It is not. We've not done the work to really roll up and look at what the word cuts mean. Cuts are painful. Tightening belts for all businesses and all counties and governments is painful. It's uncomfortable. We have not done the uncomfortable. We've just done great work here in McHenry County, but we haven't done the uncomfortable. If we use this buffer year to do some of that uncomfortable cut, do some of that to look a little more streamlined, we get a better focused picture next year, our last year to look at, a look back, but we get a better focused picture whether that look back is even necessary or whether this county, as I believe it can, can rise to this occasion and do more with less, just like all of our constituents are doing. None of us should be looking at the fact that, how is the easiest way for us to obtain the next few years down the road through the look back? I feel like that's wrong. I'm a different kind of work ethic guy. I'm blue collar. To me, it's a roll up our sleeves and really dig in this buffer year right now, which I do understand means a lot of the work and a lot of good work went in here that has been done towards this budget is now for naught. It's naught because we can pick the pieces apart as we need those pieces, but we are truly still looking at a different scenario than what I, than what I'm looking at on the board right now today. It means it's going to take a little more time before we can actually pass a resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Kaminski.
Carrie, maybe you can help me out.
Pull your mic to yourself, please.
Sorry. Back when we had our budget meeting, we have our tablets and got an email, and it was asking for an executive assistant to the health department. How much did they make? And why would we want to have that when we're looking at trying to save money to be out there hiring an executive assistant to the director? Can't they do their job? But be that as it may.
Is that, are you talking about mental health board, or?
Yeah, and it's a bad time to send it when we're talking the budget. Another thing is, we're constantly told here at the board, here we're going to vote on, we're reclassifying people to put them into the classification of their job. We're constantly told we've got to pay a higher wage to maintain good talent. How many consultants do we actually pay in the county? And if we've got this great talent, why are we getting consultants? Just things that puzzle and, you know, get under my claw, but we're looking at ways of trying to cut money. I've never heard, I hear we have lots of consultants, but I never hear how much we're paying for them.
So, I haven't dug into that, but when you're referencing the consultants, are you speaking about ones in the general funds or the ones from, like, Division of Transportation? Because I think, I'm sorry, that they've, they've, they've spoken a lot about, in order to continue to move forward with road projects, I believe they are utilizing engineers, which my guess would be that's the vast majority of that, and.
Fair.
Yeah. I can get more information for you. I would say consulting in the general fund.
I was just coming at it from the aspect like our board member, Kunkel.
Right.
I'm a blue collar worker. We don't have categories. We have, we got to pay money to have this, and it's one chunk of money, and that's where we're looking, you know, this bucket, that bucket, both of them don't look good, but that's where I was coming from.
So, I guess my challenge back to you is, as you're seeing these resolutions each month or whatever, you know, that's, those are the kind of increases that roll into these numbers. So, you know, sometimes it's easier to look at each scenario as they come up. And a lot of times the reclasses, you know, we, we challenge departments whenever there's turnover, you're looking at what can you do differently? And a lot of times it's, it's a net reduction, but if you're shifting work, you know, it, it's just sorting things out. So, it's a good question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Chair. Carrie, can you, do you have this spreadsheet available? By chance, everybody, because I'm not sure everybody has it with them, or could you put it, if you have it available, put it on the board?
Which?
The yellow. The yellow options in it. And while you're doing that, I'm just going to make a couple of quick comments. I appreciate all the comments I've really made here today, but first of all, I don't think disparaging our, our leaders of the different department heads about if they have not done enough, they're not taking this seriously is the right way to go. I sat in budget meetings, you know, through the process, Jim, I'm talking, and we have heard the budgets, they presented those budgets, they presented them honestly with their numbers, and as far as I could tell from all the meetings I watched, we pushed all those budgets forward. We did not sit there and go, go back and find three more percent, go back and find five more percent. They presented them, we pushed them forward. These are the numbers we have now because of that process we went through, starting in June. The second thing I would just remind people of is that, and I appreciate everything the Transportation Department does, and they're fantastic, but a few years ago, they were not making payroll. The general fund had to borrow them money to make payroll. We had to raise the motor vehicle tax, and we had to do other things on the levy to get them back to where they needed to be. So, this is not a specific department problem. This is a countywide issue that we're facing. And part of that is, as Carrie's pointed out, is that inflation has gone up and up and up, and we have not raised levies to match that inflation number. So, if inflation is up three percent and we only raise revenues one percent, there's going to be a gap, and that gap has grown every single year. This is not new to this board, especially even board members have been here a long time. 2001, 2002, 2003, this stuff was put up on that board that showed the problem we were getting into going forward. And every year, we did the same thing. Staff and administration worked a bunch of magic and found the money for us to get to where we needed to be. That money is running out, or has run out. And places where, if you're going to look to cut, if you're in a company, you look to cut where your biggest expenses are, okay? But we don't want to cut the sheriff. We don't want to cut transportation, so then you start filtering down the lower ones. And those lower departments pull their weight. Somebody brought up health. Health's revenues are sixty percent of their expenses. Transportation, it's about twenty percent of their expenses. The sheriff, excuse me, is twenty percent of their expenses. So, we can't get in this push and pull about who's more important, who's not. They're all important departments in what they do. The challenge for us is, what do we do going forward? And we have a solution for us for this year, if nobody wants to do the look back, which I think is a huge, huge mistake, okay? And that is taking the budget with the yellow number, with that yellow budget, which has the green things and the yellow things, I'm just going to call them things, in it. And you don't do the look back, and you have a budget that has to use, what, seven hundred thousand, uh, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars of reserves to get us to break even. That pushes the decision forward to next year. But that decision next year then leaves us with a 2.6 million dollar budget shortfall. And some of the things we did this year are not going to be available next year. So, now you have to look at things like the specialty courts, the social worker program, because those programs can be cut and don't affect other departments. JTC, you have to look at the JTC. That costs us $250,000 a year right now. You have to look at that. We made an agreement with Moringo to lend them money, which, have they borrowed any of that money yet? That's all general fund money. So, you have to look at that agreement, decide, do we continue to do that and offer that? Those are the hard decisions we're going to have to make next year if we're going to have a, if, if again, we're not going to do a look back. And I hear people saying, let's wait another year, we'll look at the look back next year. That's not going to happen. The same people that don't want to do the look back this year are not going to want to do a look back next year. Let's be honest. So, we're faced with this challenge in front of us. It's only going to get worse. It's not going to get easier. And we're elected to make tough, hard decisions. We're not elected to run around making slogans and promises that we, we know we can't keep or can't be kept, or rely on other people to make the hard decision so I can keep the, the thing I said. There, there it is, right there. That's the yellow budget with all the yellow cuts, $660,000 in general fund money, and we're, we're, we're good to go next year. But you can see the 2.6 million dollars in the next column, and the $3 million in the next column after that. And departments have cut. The budget this year is less than last year's by $800,000. So, there have been cuts been made. I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but we're just talking about the general fund, and those cuts have been made. And we'll continue to look for other opportunities as we, as this board has done and our staff has always done, has always done. That's all.
Dr. Sager.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to try to keep these comments succinct, and yet at the same time, I think there's a lot that I, I would like to say, so I'm, I'm going to just dive in here. You know, all units of local government have and share the difficult position of making responsible financial decisions, not just for today, but for the future. Every single decision that we make impacts what our future is going to be and to look like and what this board or future boards are going to have to deal with. And so, we have to be cognizant of our impact on the future. And I think that that is the most difficult situation or question that any unit of local government has to deal with. We do, as McHenry County, have a very solid, sound reputation in the state of Illinois regarding our stable financial position. And that's a reputation that we should be proud of. And it's a reputation, as colleague Altough has indicated, that has been built by past boards making difficult decisions, and it will be continued by this board making difficult positions. But we have to make sure that we are considering our future. In order to maintain that position, we're going to have to significantly fund our reserves in the other respective funds. And to cut and to take and to move and to, you know, shuffle around is a necessary evil sometimes, but we still have to make sure that we're maintaining the proper reserves. And so, we have to look at all of these different funds that we need to maintain. That's complicated, and it's not an easy thing to do, and yet that is the task at hand. We, as a board, I think, due to the leadership of, of certainly Carrie and Mike Scala in terms of the finance chair position and others, have done a remarkable job of considering options this planning season. We've done a great job. And to come to the table and say that staff did not provide us a budget with a three percent cut or with a zero-zero budget or with a budget taking only the growth or a growth and CPI is inappropriate. And it's inappropriate because there was not a direct decision by this board to tell staff to show us a three percent cut budget at all. That was never a decision that this board made. Maybe one, two, three, or even four people said that's what we should do, but we don't act upon the individual direction of individual colleagues on this body. We act as a unit, and this unit has never said that to staff. So, we did what we thought we should do this year, and that was to work through committees, and I think the process was quite remarkable. Departments were required to go to their representative committee and to the finance committee to present. And as colleague Collins has just said, I don't know of one of those committees that said, don't move this budget forward. So, why would we expect then to come to this meeting today and say, staff didn't provide this, staff didn't provide that? We were given the opportunity to start reducing those budgets and not, as far as I know, not one committee changed those or required significant cuts. We didn't do that. That was our job. So, we moved things forward, and that's what we had before us today. Now, it is a difficult job to have to increase our revenues through taxes, but that's our source of income. And that's what we need to look at. Yes, 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 we can make cuts. I'm going to say that I'm in favor right now of at least a minimum of a six-month hiring freeze, if not longer. I think we need to look at that very seriously and consider that. And if the board is willing to do that, then we need to direct staff to make that happen in our decisions. But I think we ultimately have to understand that we can't cut our way out of these difficult positions. You just cannot do it. You have to increase revenue. And so, our job then, which is a really tough, difficult responsibility, is to go to constituents and say, ladies and gentlemen, the county board has done an absolutely remarkable job in the past, and we will continue to do a remarkable job, but yes, we have to come back to you and ask for your financial support and revenue generation. And the reason is because we have X, Y, and Z that we want to make sure continues. And that is what we have to do. And so, I, I am a little bit disturbed by the context or the suggestion that we need to kind of go back and start over again with looking at these alternative budget when we've done a thorough job, a very responsible job of our review to point. And I, I am exceptionally grateful to staff for what you have done. I'm grateful for my colleagues, and I, I want to say grateful especially to Carrie and her staff and to Mike and his efforts here with staff, because I think that we have a responsible set of options available to us, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. I had a whole list of things that I thought I would talk about, but a lot of them have already been covered, so I don't want to just kind of beat that to death. You know, it's been a very frustrating process, and I think that one of the, you know, to hear that this is a new thing, that we're just kind of, we're this, the options that we're looking at are somehow new. I know the look back is a new option for capturing revenue, but the problem has been that really for a very long time, if you go back to that R chart and it shows what we've taken versus what we could have taken, you see that blue. The blue is what we, was the uncaptured levy capacity that we had available to us. And so, I think that the prior boards really worked hard. The idea being, we're going to provide really high-quality services, and we're going to do it at the least possible cost. And I think that that was the charge. I think that, that, we've been saying it over and over and again, staff rose to the challenge, continued to offer excellent services while we're not capturing how our costs were increasing over time. And we even had a period of time where we said, we're going to cut ten. Okay, so that created a situation, not that, that we were spending willy-nilly, we were, but it created a situation where we weren't allowing our revenues to keep up with expenditures. So, one of, so, when you can, if you starve an organization and you turn around that they're not they're not, that they're spending too much, I think you set it up for failure. And we keep, this is not a family sitting around the kitchen table. I get that we all have to, you know, tighten our budgets. We do that, everyone does that. You know, we do that at our house, and we talk, and we compare ourselves to a business. We're not a business, and we're not a family sitting around the table. A family is, we do have to make tough choices as a family. Sometime, sometimes we cut out discretionary spending. Some families don't have discretionary spending. Their money is going to everything that they need. And then sometimes that requires they, they take on second jobs. It's hard. It's hard for those families. But we're different. We're, this is not an apples-to-apples comparison. We provide not only mandated, but essential services to over, what, 320,000 people, over 365 square miles? Services that help people get to work on time because the roads are clear, you know, provide health services, things that make people's lives better. And you may not have a child in the educational system, but you're gonna be awfully glad that that child was educated so that when they become your doctor in your golden years, they're, they're qualified. So we pay for those services because we get something back. A business, show me one business who's been in operation for 14 years who didn't raise their prices. One. Because you can cut your expenses, but there's a, a point of diminishing returns where your product isn't gonna be worth anything because you've chopped it up so much, nobody wants it. If you're out there in, you know, building houses, we're looking at improvements that we're gonna have to make on our house. If we don't make a decision before the end of the year, we know our prices are gonna go up because they're gonna charge us more, because their prices have gone up. So I really think that we, if we sit here year over year over year, and, and John's right, we were talking this in 2021, Mike has been up here every year saying, this is where we're headed, folks, this is what we're, where we're headed. And the answer every year is, well, one more year. One more year, you can do this for one more year. And we have made different decisions. Go back to the motor fuel tax. I wasn't gonna really get down all this, but go back to the motor fuel tax. The reason we took that option was because we depleted the county for a number of reasons, but one of them I remember very distinctly was we depleted the county highway fund. The county highway fund is funded out of the general fund, but it was also used towards highway, you know, capital equipment, road projects, whatever. Right? So we had to pay that back $3 million by having the county option, the motor fuel tax. That was a good choice. And the reason for that is because people who use the roads should help pay for keeping the upkeep, right? And it takes the burden off of the property owner and puts it on the people who are using them, people not only who live here, but visit and work here. And it was never intended to be a, like, okay, if we, if we take that off and we take the motor fuel tax, we're not, we're gonna have an equal decrease in the general fund. That's not the way that we did that. We had to pay back the general fund. The idea was to secure that revenue for future operations by not... We put off capital projects, and I remember talking about this, and we talked about like the snowplows. By putting off capital purchases, we end up costing the county more money in the end because by the time we got around to it, they were dramatically more expensive. So trying to keep those things in mind as we go forward. So I think what we're getting at, when we, and we pound the staff over and over and over again, more cuts, more cuts, they come to before us. We've had people say yes to salary increases, the election center, whatever, but then we turn around and we don't vote for the budget that is needed to support the things that we spent the entire year saying yes to. Okay, so now we're doing better, right? But even still, we're having things come forward, and we're not identifying those things that we're not willing to pay. It's not, we have said here, sat here as a board, I would say back in 2022, it's not staff's job to tell us which of these essential services we're not willing to pay for. So when the public health budget came forward and their board members kept saying, these aren't mandated, but we think they're essential, and this is why, nothing was pulled off. Because they made a good, either they made a good case for it, or nobody wanted to identify what they're not willing to pay for. They wanna leave that up to staff. We do have smaller departments. What are we gonna do, not pay GIS mapping? Maybe we don't need that service. Or maybe we don't, maybe we don't do have that extra planner, and now our permits take a lot longer. But they're bringing those budgets forward, and we have an opportunity to talk about them at that time. So I think it's, it's important that if, and, and comments have been made in session, excuse me, that really there's only certain departments that are really important, that we really absolutely have to fund, and, and three were identified in, in a committee meeting, of transportation, sheriffs, and courts. And if that's the case, we're talking about a fundamental shift in what we do as a county. And so we need to be willing, if we think that what we're doing is important and the services we provide improve the quality of life for people in this county, then we ought to be advocating for that and making sure that we're funding it properly.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Chairman. As a finance committee member, I felt obligated to let the, my fellow committee members and the rest of the board know how I would have voted if I'd have been there. I had an obligation that I could not make it that day. So I spent a lot of time going through, watching the finance video of the meeting, and at the end of it, actually going through it a couple times, I, I didn't really hear anything dramatically different or new that would have influenced me a lot other than what we've been talking about essentially all summer. So I'm quite certain that I would have made what I felt was a realistic and responsible decision, decision, and voted yes at that committee meeting. And I thought, I just wanted to make sure that everybody would have understood that. As we move forward, I hope we can have more discussion on what the abatement could be, what it would look like, and how much more we could add to it. That would be great. But I just wanted everybody to know that my vote at that committee meeting would have been a yes. Thank you.
Mr. Hendricks, do you still have your hand up from before, or do you have an additional comment?
I do have additional comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, as, as far as, I believe, Mr. Sager, you said, you know, there was no direction it's to staff to, you know, develop several different budget policies. It's literally in our budget policy. Our budget policy directed staff to evaluate multiple scenarios. So I don't, all these comments about, you know, it was never asked, it's literally, it's literally the first section of our budget policy G. So I'll have to disagree that, that, you know, that this was made. I agree. One person asking for something doesn't mean it. Everybody unanimously approving a budget policy that says budgets, various scenarios are gonna be, you know, evaluated and presented, I think that's different. As far as the actual resolution, I just wanna point out, this wasn't, none of these, the levy or the budget, was not approved by finance committees, so this is technically not recommended. Regarding the, you know, whether we can amend it or not, we, we can. I don't understand why everybody says we can't. First off, section 55 ILCS 5 slash 6 dash 1001 is only about the annual budget, it's not about the levy. But regardless, it says, except that nothing in this act shall restrict the county board or county board of commissioners from acting at a public meeting to amend a budget after making that budget available to the public and prior to final adoption. You absolutely can.
After, the key word is after, I think.
No, yeah, it would be, it's presented, it would be presented on Tuesday. It'd be presented on Tuesday. Immediately after that is after. It has nothing to do with days. I've failed to find any case law saying that. I brought this up last year. I, you know, it, it's just not true. Going to, and then again, going back, we violated our own budget policy. We're, we're placing a budget that wasn't recommended by finance committee. We didn't get, we weren't provided the various scenarios required under the budget policy. We're actually considering one that was not directed under the budget policy for 2026 or any year for that matter. And then, on a lighter note, member Campbell said, name a business that hasn't raised, you know, prices. Costco hot dogs have been $1.50 since 1985.
Those are lost leaders, by the way.
That's it.
Can I just, can I just take one further?
I, you know what, actually, I, I just don't understand. How, how, how can, how can we say that they weren't directed? It's in the budget policy, and we all voted for it. Not a single person dissented from it. And then to have the gall to say, oh, it's inappropriate to be bringing this up, like, I think that's ridiculous. So I, I'm gonna end on that because I'm getting annoyed, but, you know, that's my thoughts on it. I think we should follow the budget policy.
Mr. Kearns?
To back, to back, remember Hendricks up a little bit on the budget policy? I have it right here, I've always kept it in my drawer. Passed on the 20th of May. Page two, the last section, general policy statement, one GI, scenario one, reduction under scenario one, the budget shall be developed under the assumption that the prior levy will decrease by 3%. That's, that was option one. Then it said scenario two, three, four, and five. Okay, so, so that was in there. Now, transportation committee, to the members who wanna excoriate us on some of those things, did put forward a 3% decrease, which is what was passed forward to the board. If the other committees didn't, didn't see the 3% presented to them, maybe, maybe they shouldn't have passed those through without asking for that to come back to them. So I'm sorry, but now we have to have these discussions about, and, and I'm not excoriating department heads, but I'm saying department heads are gonna have to help us out here a little bit. If, if, if we don't pass any of this, we've gotta figure this out. So, you know, at one point, I was, I was a yes vote on several of these different positions. I'm not so sure anymore after today. And I wanna see, because I believe as a yes vote, we still need those cuts. And I've said that since the day one I've been on this board. And I've always voted in, in my belief on those things, because we have not seen those cuts though. I've always preached sustainability. We're not there, and we're not there with the, with a major increase here. We're not sustainable. And so I really am pushing, and I'm not, I'm not belittling department heads, I just want you to understand that, Mr. Collins and Mr. Sager. I am saying department heads need to come forward and say, maybe we can do a little bit more here. Transportation certainly has done it. They certainly have done it. And yes, they were in a position that they did not have their fund because they gave, gave, gave throughout the years, and they gave it all. So they did give it all. And, and so it is time that we look at some of these other departments and say, maybe we can do without this, and we can do without that for, for whatever until this gets straightened out, until we find better funding. But when the state is uncertain how they're going to fund things and everything else, we don't wanna be like the state. I agree, we need to, we need to possibly protect our, our revenue source. And, and that's why I was leaning toward voting for it. But I wanna be able to say back to my constituents, we did every single thing possible to make my vote the way my vote is. And, and I want that proven to me in the next 30 days. And whether it came out of committee or not, was passed through committee, if it didn't have the 3% in their presentation, which I've heard that several of them did not, then show me the 3% presentation. That's all I'm gonna say.
Can I, can I respond to that? So in the budget policy, the 3% reduction is on the levy, not the expenses. So as, as Pete mentioned, through, when we got to June, it, it was kind of August, decided that, that even maxing it out was not sustainable based on our current expenses. So any percent of CPI is about 660,000 a cut. So whatever scenarios you want, I can send them, and that's all just based on the levy. And second, highway fund is not reduced, their budget from '25 to '26. And I'm not saying it's not a great budget, but it, it was not presented as a reduction.
The bridge was presented as a reduction.
So the project funds...
Joe, was the bridge presented as a deduction, reduction? Yes, it was.
So the project funds budget for an entire project when they're gonna start it, and then they roll it over year over year. So you're gonna see their project funds go up and down every year regardless of the levy discussions. And I don't think we've passed a budget in the past several years that matched those budget scenarios exactly. It's kind of a starting off point. If you would like me to show you how much bigger the gap is using all of those, I can send that to you.
We need to see that gap in all those departments. We, I'm sorry, we have to make some cuts in our budget, but we have to make more. And, and because you've shown us it's not sustainable, even if we max it out. So why should we, why should we pass a budget that's not sustainable long-term? We can't do it any longer.
That's, yes, I agree.
This is not directed at any individual board member, but I think we're starting to repeat ourselves an awful lot here, so we have two hands up right now, I'm gonna take those. If you had something to add that hasn't been discussed already, I'd be happy to entertain that, Ms. Greeno. Go ahead, please.
I do. So I wanted, to be fair and for the benefit of the board and any audience, on the June 12th, 2025 Cal minutes that were approved on July 15th of 2025, it specifically says that the preferences were for a budget direction, not levy, budget, including options such as a 3% overall reduction, and then the non-growth CPI and the combinations of both. So it was very specific, and everyone left that meeting with that understanding. There were no, no one went back and amended those minutes or asked for any corrections to those minutes. So to say that there was no direction, that we had these scenarios, to even say that it was directed at the levy, these things had to be clarified, but we were expecting balanced scenarios presented to us so that we could then go and have town halls in our districts to present this to the public and get feedback. So just to be fair, let's make sure that everything is accurate. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Hendricks? If you have something to add that hasn't been discussed already, I'll entertain it. If not, let's move ahead.
Yes, I do. So again, under the budget policy, I, I don't have the unamended one in front of me, but what I do have is for scenario two, three, four, and five, it just, as a point of clarification, it absolutely is not just talking about the levy, it's talking about the budget shall be developed under the assumption that, and then it talks about the levies. So I just wanted to clarify that. The budget policy isn't just referring to the levy, it's talking about the budget.
Okay. Very good. See, no further discussion. Pete, you got a report for us today?
I appreciate the discussion today, and I assure you that we will work on some of these things, like the cost of our propositions, maybe the cost of, of operating the bus, the scenarios of paybacking, paying back FICA debt at a different time or a different manner, the value of a, of a six-month hiring freeze, although I think we wanna focus more on the six-month hiring fees in the general fund. Right? And I also wanna reiterate, you know, the, the 16 positions that we have already eliminated from, from next year's budget, and we, and, and I assure you, we can look for some additional opportunities moving forward, so we'll take it from there.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Ms. Althoff, seconds, all in favor, say aye. Have a good day.